Alright, we'll be starting for the pitch. You keep driving, okay? Alright.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold on. First thing we'll discuss is, we're going to view the board calendar. Just had a chance to take a look at that.
One thing I wanted to let you know about is, we along with all the other districts in Pierce County Skill Center area, have been invited to the new educator breakfast. So this is a place where they just invite new teachers, people who are connected right at high schools, central office leaders who maybe haven't seen the Skill Center before, board members who haven't seen it before. There's an opportunity to go there and learn more about the Skill Center, which several of our kids go to. So if you're interested in attending that on October 24th, you can let Bonnie know and she'll put it on our calendars if you'd like.
I'll be attending.
Okay. It's really amazing and beautiful facility and progress.
I'm looking forward to seeing exactly where our students go. I've been reading about it, but I haven't, I have no idea what that space still looks like. So I'm really interested in attending.
Bonnie, do we have a microphone down here today?
We don't. Would you all be to get one?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Carrie, did you get it? Are you able to?
Yes. Yes, I was taking my phone off. Yes, I would like to attend. I've only seen the, I think it's the cafeteria area, when we went to meet with legislators there and represent Ordin. And so I would like to come hopefully to get a tour or at least an overview of the facility.
And I think I would like to go too. Can't get online.
It's on October 24th.
So Bonnie, if you can, Carrie, myself, and Jennifer will be going.
Thank you.
Meet here, I'll just... You can just all meet here and then carpool down.
Okay, we'll get that coming.
How much time do we have to decide it? We have to decide it today?
No, no, it's on October 24th. So if you're able to go or you want to go, just let Bonnie know and she'll arrange it.
How much time do we have to confirm?
I don't think you have to confirm anything.
No, there's no RSVP, I don't think.
Sorry, is it if you?
Just let us know and then that way we just want to make sure we get on your calendar if you're interested and we'll make sure our carpool is big enough.
Hey Bonnie, just sit there, everybody, and see who wants to go. Then if you can make it, you can make it. Everyone will know if we could take a bigger car, a van, or whatever. But yes, that'd be nice. What about you? No?
Possibly. I have to check the work calendar for sure.
So, thank you Bonnie.
Sounds good, you're welcome.
Alright. Bobby, do you want to do anything? You didn't like me.
So for our next item, we had maintaining professional staff and student boundaries before at a board work session a while ago. And then we had it on some board meetings. And we've had an opportunity to discuss it and get input from stakeholders. And then Board, you requested that we bring in some folks. So we brought some experts. We have experts, athletic director Marty Parkerst and wrestling coach, and much more. Jody Coleman, thank you both for... And can I use that microphone? I want to make sure we're picked up on our... Thank you both for...
It's not on the...
Okay. Testing, testing.
Drop a beat.
Thank you both for joining us on this, the third day of school, as we're going to talk again about maintaining professional staff and student boundaries. The board has discussed this at several meetings and then we wanted to consult with some experts. So we brought in expert Marty Parkerst, athletic director, and Jody Coleman, wrestling coach. Executive Dr. Rod, do you want to lead us on this?
Yeah, so what you...
And I gave you the microphone, so...
I can use my personal voice. I've got one of those. This one's dead, I think.
You ready to go, Dennis?
I'm going. Look around, we'll tell you.
You have ones? So you have, we have two pieces of papers. Am I on? There are two pieces of paper here that look identical, but they are slightly different. So you reference those. Go to the backside, which is the area that we're talking about. Item C, coaching sports. The paper with the red ink is the work that we have done so far on this policy. The paper with the blue ink, WASDA has already revised the policy since we started talking about it. So when they first put it out and then we started talking about it and we've gotten as far as the red ink, they actually came out with a revision of the policy. And so the blue strikeouts are WASDA's revision to the policy. So you can see that we're on the right track. So they eliminated it from coaching girls' sports to just coaching sports. They actually took out most of the same things that we did and changed it. Except they, we added on item four, wrestling coaches should not demonstrate holds on opposite gender students. WASDA's policy states wrestling coaches should not demonstrate holds on student wrestlers unless... So they're not, they're taking the... And I think that was actually for Carrie, who's listening. I think that was one of the, I was thinking that was one of her sticking points, if I remember correctly. Well, she said, "Why are we specifying that?" So WASDA said, they made that unspecific. Jody, I'm sure has some thoughts about that. And then they left in, coaches should permit parents to attend wrestling practices. We had struck that out. So those are... The WASDA policy then probably addresses what Carrie was talking about. Just eliminating the opposite gender and just leaving it as student. So you can discuss that. And then the other issue is they left the coaches should permit parents to attend wrestling practices. And then so just, if it's alright, can we maybe have these guys speak to the changes? I'll pass the mic down. Are we going to do a rendition of...
Sure, we'll let them say something. First of all, this is amazing because when Jody and I were talking last spring, everything that WASDA or whoever this came from, it's exactly what Jody proposed. How strange that, I mean, from when Jody and I sat down and looked. We didn't want to handcuff us or keep it so gender specific. There are some principles that apply that go for all coaches and all students. And so I, once I read this, I went, "Yeah, okay, we're in a good place." Whether we say students or opposite gender students, I don't know, down the road, maybe there's going to be a boy's parents who don't want a guy coach even, you know, showing moves on him. And we would honor that, that's fine. Then you have his wrestling buddy, his partner come in and line him up and say, "Now watch, watch what he does here." So there is room for flexibility. And this idea that, well, you wouldn't have opposite sex wrestling without meeting with the parents. For sure, we're going to have a parent meeting and just kind of walk through that whole process. So all the parents, male, female, their children, would all have that opportunity to sign off, have a little checkbox in a form saying, "Yeah, it's okay. What if we hire a gal wrestling coach and the dad doesn't want her doing a move on his son?" So it really does go in all directions. Jody and I were talking, going way out there. With, in this day and age, without kids that are gender specific or in transition, boy, it's just hard to figure out where you go with this. So the more general it is, I think it's going to be safe and yet we're addressing it. And by the way, the front page, I was saying to Bonnie, is outstanding. And that goes for everybody. And this was great advice when I was a young teacher, right? Nothing's changed, this is just practical, smart, anyway. I was real pleased to read that. So that's where I'm at. Jody, you want to add anything?
Yeah, I think by taking the gender specific out, I think it's good because, you know, like, we've had boys on the team that, you know, are going through things and changing and, you know. And so when you take that specific, boy to girl, you know, I think that's almost an old way of thinking. And then, you know, sad to say, but being around wrestling for 40 years of my life, I know very few incidents of abuse where it was like opposite, you know. And that's sad to say, but it's, this, I think the vagueness protects all the kids from everybody, you know. So we make sure good people are around the kids and supporting them.
You want to address the practices and parents attending?
Yeah.
Just so they get a vibe. And we've been all over the map in the last 25 years with this. But give them your philosophy or why you're a little concerned about it. Just say, "Hey, it's open all the time."
Right. So, well, you know, just like any practice, it's, we run a very structured practice. It's not just, it's not like there's no thought to it. And things that come in and out of the room are distraction. You know, even small things. So like if basketball has to go upstairs and bring hoops down and things, those are minimal distractions to the kids and they get used to it. And the basketball guys do a great job just in and out, in and out. But now if we have, you know, 10, 15 parents coming in and then, you know, parents want to talk or parents wanting to give input, it just distracts from the room and the flow of it. And then I've had parents too, in the last couple of years, that were asked not to be in the room because, you know, the way they verbalize it. Wrestling's a very intense sport. And I think some parents lose sight of maybe what the lesson is you're trying to teach a kid. Like we might, we might set a young man or girl up to wrestle in practice and we might tell them they can do specific things, which they're going to fail at. And we train them to fail so they get better at it and better at it. And if you get some random father or dad usually come in the room and he just sees, you know, little Jimmy just getting beat, 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 and he doesn't understand why. You know, and then you have, you know, 250 pound man up in the stands screaming at his kids, it just changes practice. And I don't have any problem if a parent wants to come in, if they have concerns. They say, "Hey, I'm just going to sit up there, that'd be great." You know, if they communicate those things with me, hey, come on in, you know. And then the other part of that is, I've had a lot of good wrestlers and their dads come in as volunteers. But we've always had a deal where, you know, as a volunteer, they understand kind of what we're doing in the room. So it's different than sitting in the stands, being part of peanut gallery. And I never let those volunteers coach their own kids, even in the room, because it just creates a different kind of pressure. It's just some philosophy I've always kind of stood by in wrestling though. So I would really like to keep parents out of our room unless, you know, it's kind of pre-arranged, if there's a purpose.
If I got a call from a parent, "Hey Marty, I'm concerned about my boy," and whatever, I'd say, "Hey, can you meet me? Let's go to practice." And I'd talk to Jody and we would arrange it. It's not that it needs to be hardcore, you know, we don't want that. That's not the heart behind it. It's certainly not about being secretive or hiding anything from anyone. So...
Mr. Parkerst, are there other sports that don't encourage parents to attend?
Basketball, when we had it. So all of a sudden, I, this was some years back when Jessica Squires had just started being our head coach. Now there's a mom and a dad in my office and they're talking about practice and an inbound's play. No, it ought to be... I shook my head and I said, "Are you kidding me? Are you also now going to tell me that I have to run cover two instead of cover three? Because we became a cover three football team." And I'm looking, these are great people, wonderful. But I'm saying, "What are we doing here? Is that why you came in to have a special meeting during the day with me? To talk about an inbound's play? You don't like the inbound's play or how she used her timeouts." I just was dumbfounded. But where we landed, especially during tryouts and cuts, is if they could stay out during certain times, now the coach has their full attention, kind of what Jody was saying, and they can go through things. If a parent's there for three, four days, they're an expert now. I've had that happen in football. Yeah, I've seen every practice in the last two weeks. We let them up in the stadium and they can watch every day. But now all of a sudden they watched and they become experts. They wonder why you cut a certain player. "Wait, I saw, my son's way better than that other little guy over there." "Well, you didn't understand, your son's a junior, that kid's a freshman." "We might want to keep the freshman." Anyway, there's some, being at practices give parents an unrealistic power that they feel they have.
Almost entitled sometimes.
Yeah, in the program. And sometimes it's dead innocent, but still, we don't need mom saying, "Come here Johnny, here's your water bottle." No, coach is trying to run practice and mom, she's trying to be helpful, but right in the middle of practice, giving the water bottle? Coach Nasnik was, it was in the middle of the baseball season and he came down to check on our fields out back. There's a dad running a full baseball practice with our team. The entire team. And it's a full-blown baseball practice on a Sunday. And Chad's going, "What in the world? Wasn't I the coach? What is happening here?" Man, it can go haywire quick. And so it's not top secret, we're not hiding anything, but for the kids' sake, our coaches' sake, even the parents' sake, really, it's better that we just don't leave it wide open. But I understand why they would put this in here because they want to show that we're transparent and we're, and we are. Again, if any parent wanted to come in, "Hey, could I come in for a couple of days?" And, "Yeah, you're not going to come in for six weeks, but sure, I'll talk to coach and arrange it in advance." You bet. Oh, sorry for skipping. To go back to basketball, when we put it in, the first group got done between 4:30 and 4:45, whether that was girls that week or boys, going early, late, early, late. So what we told the parents for a couple of years was, "Hey, at 4:30, you're welcome to come on in." So you'll see the last 15 minutes of practice, maybe watching the kids run some lines and shoot free throws or whatever, but sure, you're welcome to come on in. The team would gather around coach and have their final words and parents are right there. So we would make arrangements where it was acceptable, but not from 2:45 to 4:30. So that was kind of our compromise.
So if I can recap, what I hear is the recommendation is that we keep WASDA's changes, the blue marks, and we keep them as WASDA suggested, which are really similar to what we already suggested. With the exception of striking out, coaches should permit parents to attend wrestling practices. What we're not doing is saying, "We're not allowing any parents to attend wrestling practices." We're just striking out that line.
Yeah, because I think if you strike out that line, I think it leaves...
It opened.
It's still an opportunity.
Yes, it sure is. Yeah. Those have been our only two sports, wrestling and basketball, that we've really ever had an issue. Of course, the other sports tend to be outside and it's kind of hard to say you can't watch baseball practice or fast pitch, right? While you're down there walking the track or something.
Great, great recommendations, team, because WASDA thought, WASDA and all their wisdom and attorneys, the whole team of attorneys.
That just cracked me up when I read this, I thought, "Oh, it's Jody." Jody's working for the wrong business. Yeah, any other answer in regards to that? I mean, does that help?
It sure does. I just have a comment, I want to thank both of you for being here tonight. I have to say that wrestling is one of the most intense sports I've seen live. Even going to the Ordin wrestling matches, I have to like turn my head because I feel the suspension, the kids are one on one on the mat, the lights are on them, you could feel the pressure in the crowd. You could see that the kids really want it bad. And it takes so much dedication, so much hard work. And I just commend you for working with those kids because our wrestling team is like number one. Like we are known for wrestlers. And so congratulations on all your work that you've done.
Yeah, we're going to be good this year.
Yeah. All of a sudden, there's some, yeah. Just wait for the next six years and see how that looks.
We've been good, but we're about to be better.
Yeah, crazy, crazy good.
The whole group is amazing. A group of eighth graders is probably the best group I've ever seen. And then a group of sixth graders, if they stick it out, are believable. That's awesome.
I just want to make a comment now. When my son was a, I want to make a comment, when my son was a wrestler, he never let me to go to watch him on any days. Not because I was getting into the sport, that's because he saw me how stressed I was getting. I know it's very intense. And for him, he says, "Mom, if you come, I won't practice the same." So he was the one who detained me to go see him. And I was glad that he also detained me because myself, I really don't want to be there. I don't want to disturb him and I don't want to disturb anybody else. So it was healthy for me, my son, to detain me not to go to see him on practice. Yes, I got it. So my thing for other students could be disturbing too if the parents are there.
Yeah, absolutely, definitely.
Any comments, Carrie?
Yes, I would just like to go with Jennifer said and thank you gentlemen for coming and sharing your views on this. It was really, it's just a, you know, my heels are in on this board. It was very important for me that we have an inclusive policy, inclusive for all students and someone that's workable for the coaches and the teams that are growing up here in Ordin themselves. I appreciate both your inputs and I'm pretty happy with these changes. And I also just, you know, echo your sentiments that it should really be, in my opinion, I've been an athlete, my children have grown up as athletes. And I feel it should be the coaches' decision to decide how and when parents can be involved in participating practices. And so I'm in favor of striking out that last line. But again, it's such a busy time of year and I just really appreciate you making time to come tonight. And I'm sitting here in traffic wishing somebody would be there. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any comments?
Ditto. I want to thank the board for inviting these folks to come in and share with us and for wanting to hear from the people who are really closest to it. So I just appreciate that about our word, so thank you so much. Thanks, you two, you're welcome to stay, but you also don't have to.
You stay already.
No, it's not going to be a good time.
You've probably been here 12 hours already, so thank you so much.
Thank you, thanks you guys.
Well, we need to take action on this? No, okay. Next thing, I'm going for reports?
Yes, we're going to start with update about the PTR portable and I'm going to pass the microphone to our chief officer. And I just want to publicly thank her for, if, continuing with our sports analogy, picking up the ball and making forward progression. And not only that, but in the face of a really powerful defense who were constantly pushing back timelines and obstacles and, I mean, she just, I don't know, was throwing elbows and keeping her feet chopping and pressing forward.
I don't, I am a metaphor, just blowing.
But just pressing forward, knowing that the clock was ticking and running out for school to start. And she battled, battled for Ordin kids and teachers, staff, and families. So I'm so grateful for her work and so Debbie can, after that you can share where we are with the PTR portable.
Thank you, Marcy. I will say for sure, this was a team effort. I absolutely, my small pardon, it could not have happened with the portable opening without everyone that was participating. But I do want to give you an update and I hope that you all know that we opened on time with the PTR portable. So first day of school, kids were in the portable. But I want to, yeah, it was exciting. But I just wanted to kind of go through what the summer looked like with regard to the portable and give you some perspective and see if you have any questions for me. So just so we're all on the same page, it's an eighth classroom portable with two student bathrooms. We broke construction. I know this project has been talked down for a while and some things financially have been in the works, but we literally broke ground shy of five months ago. So in April, April 22nd of 2019, the delivery of the nine portable units, eight classrooms and the bathroom sections, didn't happen until near the end of May. The installation of the modular pieces, so actually putting them in the ground where they needed to be, because this is a modular unit, didn't happen until June 4th. So here we are, three months later, and we have a fully functioning portable. It's approximately, and I say approximately because I did my simple math, it's approximately 1,000 square feet, I believe, based on the various pieces that were put together. Now, you may recall that the original amount for the portable was 1.2 million. That was the portable itself. And one of the important pieces to realize, and I know we all know this now, is that there were so many other things that were required. There was groundwork and gas lines and electrical lines with some ditch digging and utility companies. There was carpet, furniture, all those types of things. So when Marcy Bannon, our business services administrator, came to the board in the summer, I believe it was July, and asked for a extension, it was because we are now realizing or have realized all of the pieces that went into making this be a final project. So we later, with that 1.2 just being a, just the bare bones structure itself, we are at 2.65 million is what we have in the budget for that. That, we do have seven change orders, some of which are, well, hopefully all of which are included in there, but she is, Marcy is currently, Marcy Bannon is currently working through the numbers to make sure, some of those change orders are as small as $5,000 and $16,000. So we're not talking large dollar amounts, but I do want you to be aware that we are processing seven change orders right now. Some of those can be as, I'll say, simple as, there was, way back when, at some point, there was a mistake made when the company was measuring the flooring, so we needed to purchase some additional flooring because the design was not going to work without the rest of the tiles in place. So we, of course, we authorized that change order to make sure that we could have the rubber tile, the flooring that goes in the hallway be complete for that area. We've had several different companies involved in this and so I just wanted to state their names because, again, this was a team effort. So we had an architect with Erickson Montgomery. And the architect is really, in my mind, the project manager. That's the person that we would go to as a district to find out what our next steps are. Not boots on the ground at the portable, but the person by phone that was always available. We also had a general contractor as well as a site superintendent and they were with CSF contractors. I do want to publicly give a shout out to both Brody and Mick, who were, they not only, when they met with Marcy and I and others, they not only shared with us where we had some perceived obstacles and things we needed to work on, but they gave us methods, suggested methods for, "These are the people you need to contact." Because I was coming in late to this project or later. And so they were just a huge support and they really, really wanted to see us succeed. And even to the end... And even to the end, uh, I'm going to share some pieces that we're doing now. I know that Brody and Mick are specifically helping us move that forward. With Modern Building Systems, we have, that's the company that built the portable. And so, um, their sales manager has been with us on site as recent as last week. And then, uh, we've had a variety of district employees that have worked with this project over time. So it is an eighth classroom portable. We have our fourth grade teachers at Tarmigan Ridge in the portable. Uh, we have seven eighth grade teachers this year, um, and so that is, that's what we're doing with that port, that portion of the portable. I just want to give you a more recent update on kind of the final push to the end. Uh, August 22nd, just to give you perspective on how everything happened in, in the latter part of the summer. August 22nd, we passed our plumbing inspection. And when we passed that, we also, again, Brody, had the city come in. And this was a great move for the district. He had the city come in and ask them to look around and see if we could start moving things in, not gaining occupancy, but putting our teacher furniture and, our teacher and student furniture in place. That was huge and being able to be ready for the first day of school because we were able to do all of that ahead of time. So that was a wonderful piece that they did in making sure that the city would authorize that. We couldn't put anything on the walls, we couldn't occupy it yet, but we had, uh, the company come in and set up all the furniture ahead of time. On August 29th, so the teachers had been setting up for about a week at that point. On August 29th, at 7:00 AM, our floors were finished. At 9:00 AM, we had a fire inspection. At 10:00 AM, we had our life safety inspection with the city. And that's when we gained, uh, temporary occupancy for the portable. And at that point, uh, the teachers were able to fully move in. I say it's temporary occupancy because we still are finalizing the gas lines. So with Puget Sound Energy, they had us on the schedule, this is something you do three and four months in advance. They had us on the schedule for September 16th, knowing it was a four to five day project. I panicked, um, but then I was told that not only could we get and did get the temporary occupancy, but that we have methods within the HVAC unit to be able to, uh, kind of bypass in a safe way that would allow us to have some air in the building, uh, in the event that the days are so hot like we've had just recently, where so that the students could, the students and staff could be comfortable. Um, PTR was able to have their open house and give some tours, having, uh, families go out to the portable. And that was on time on the 29th. And then, uh, one of the most amazing things that I found with regard to the portable, and the shout out goes to Steve Rapp and the tech team that Matt Hudson oversees and Josh and Denise are here tonight. And Jenny is also part of that team. That team went in and installed computers, projectors, screens and phones in short order. I mean, just days. And they, not only, um, not only did they install all of that, but they worked and coordinated with the maintenance department to be able to get the, uh, I don't know what it's called, but fancy plywood, I'll call it. But the, the nice plywood that gets cut and painted that they can attach the projectors on. So it was a matter of going into the building and, and actually retrofitting this, this, um, apparatus in there. So by the, um, 30th of August, which was prior to Labor Day, they were 100% complete. And I was, it was just amazing. They did a, a really awesome job. And we had the holiday weekend and Tuesday, we opened the portable. We were open for school. Um, one of the exciting things that happened yesterday is Puget Sound Energy bumped us up. We had asked for an open spot on the schedule. If something came up ahead of the 16th, they said not likely. It's four to five days worth of work. We're going to hold the 16th through the 20th for you. And yesterday, they were able to show up and start the gas line work. So we expect that to be done in, in the next three days. Final inspection will be called after the gas lines are complete. And the final walkthrough with the architect, I've requested that so that, um, Principal Alicia Jensen and I and, and Marcy, if she'd like to join us, can go through the building. Uh, they, they suggested that we put blue tape, you know, painter's tape. They suggested we put that in places that need repair. But I thought it looked a little inviting for kids, so we're going to do a walkthrough and maybe take some pictures and, and take a list of those items that, I think we have one door that's just tilted a little bit where it needs to open and close more appropriately. And so we'll, we'll make up a punch list of our minor things that need to be repaired. Um, a couple of issue, issues that I just want to let you know about. We're hearing, uh, questions on why there's, um, or the fact, I should say, that we don't have a staff bathroom out there. So, uh, I checked into that today. We have a temporary fix and I don't know what the long term is going to be yet, but temporary is that there is a restroom for adults in the back of the cafeteria, in the, in the kitchen area. And so the staff members, uh, when the time is of the essence, they, where they need to get back into class, they are utilizing that on the short term. And then the other item that is so recent in my information, I haven't even got to share with Marcy yet, but it's, uh, this afternoon I found out that with all of the students for the seven classrooms trying to enter the building through one access point, even though there are two doors, it's more natural to come from the playground or lunch, et cetera, into the one door. There's, the volume of students is so great that the teachers are proactively working with, uh, Principal Jensen right now to figure out some lineup procedures so that students can go through the doors in a more orderly fashion. Uh, they really don't want to send students around to the other side. It's just closer to the access road and we'd like to keep them on the other, the playground side if we can. But they're working through that and been very proactive about it. So that concludes my report. Any other questions?
Great job.
Good job. It's been a fun project.
Really shows how hard the team works. I'm really, really impressed with the report because, um, I had my fingers crossed it would be open for the first day of school.
And it sounds like everyone just put their hard, hard work into it, so thank you very much for that. Um, I do have a question regarding the accessibility. So, um, the entrance ways, is that all concreted? Is that accessible also for especially kids as well?
Yes, there's sidewalk on the, on the front side, there's sidewalk, let me think about that. Have you walked in there too, Chris? I, I've walked it so many times, but I'm trying to picture, so, so there's, there's a sidewalk that goes up and accesses the building and then turns so that it's, uh, I don't even think it's ramped. I think it's pretty well leveled and it just goes right into the front door. On the backside, there's a concrete pad and I honestly can't remember how they depart from there, so I can check into that. Just to refresh my memory.
I'm looking forward to visiting the portable and, and doing the tour.
It's fun. It's fun to see every, all the, the variety. And this is true of every school building, but the variety of teacher classrooms and, you know, how they've chosen to set it up. And it was a lot of fun going in there. Uh, they had just had a weekend to set up and I went in and saw the classrooms.
Good job.
It was good.
Any other, Carrie? Carrie?
Just poking in right now.
I'm walking in.
So if there's nothing else on the portable, thank you so much to the tech team and Debbie and all of, all of, um, the folks that had a hand in making that happen and allowing us to open by the first day of school is such a celebration and I know it took a lot of work. Um, next, we're going to give a communication update, so thank you, Tara, for sharing.
I just want to restart this because it's, and I don't want it to do that in the middle of what I'm about to share, so.
Is that okay?
Airplay. Or what, maybe, is on the OSD? We got the director of technology here helping us, so. Thank you. Get connected.
Get connected, let's connect.
Now look at my notes on my phone here. Perfect. There we go. Awesome. Thank you so much. Okay, that's my calendar. You don't want to see that.
So, we have a lot of irons in the fire around communication right now. There's a lot of exciting things that are going to happen this year. It was great my first year. Marcy gave me the grace to, you know, we did some great things, but there was also a lot of observing that happened, which was important to understand what the next steps were. So, we're there. And, so I'm going to give you an update on some of the things that we have done recently and are going to continue to do throughout the year. The first thing is that our Connections newsletter just went out to all families in Orting and I understand that we have, um, someone that received one today, so that's great. And I actually just checked my email and I also received an email from a citizen who's interested in joining one of the committees.
It actually doesn't even go up to all families, but it goes up to people who don't have kids connected to the school district. So community members, business owners, everyone gets.
I got one that they do.
Awesome. I made that. So this is the, so you've seen it, but this is the cover spread, so, and this is very similar to what we did last year, same look. Um, so we have the, um, welcome letter on the cover and we talk about, um, character heroes on the very front page so that our community knows that we are looking forward to continuing our culture of caring work and want them to join in on that. On the back page, which is what you see on the left, is our basic contact information, just like we did last year, so people know how to reach out. And on the inside, you'll see the same thing that we shared, um, at our district kickoff in our program. So we always look at the world through our orange colored glasses. It's all about our kids. And so we wanted to share some stories about students who have shown that they are college, career or life ready and just share a little bit about them and make it personal. So that's what we did. And then we also shared our Let's Connect menu. These were the opportunities that community members could also join. We obviously have more that we shared at kickoff, which were, you know, included things that staff might join as well. But we wanted our community to know what they were able to join. So we shared that in our Connections newsletter. So that's the first thing that we did. Um, and then again, we also shared all of this at kickoff and we had some really great responses there, um, with, um, just a lot of interest from staff. I mean, we got dozens and dozens of signups for almost every committee, team or focus group that we solicited and put for. So then the next thing we'll look at is, um, internal communication is a big focus for us this year, um, as it, as it is every year. But, um, we, last year when we did our communication survey, one of the things that we learned was that our staff wanted to, um, first of all, learn more about the new staff that was here in Orting because they wanted to be able to, to say hi to them in the hall and welcome them to our district, which I think really speaks to what a great place Orting is. They also said that they were interested, like, we're a small enough district that they want to know what's going on in, in schools and not just at the district office. So with that, we've sort of revamped the quick look a little bit to, uh, kind of sprinkle that input into it. And so this is what staff will start receiving now. It is a little bit more of an e-newsletter type of a format. And at the top, we'll all have the things that were shining a light on that here, our focus. So this is your character heroes welcoming new staff. Oh, that's not quite it. But when you click on, what's great is when you click on this welcome new staff, get to know them here, it will link to this lovely little page here. And the staff that wanted to and were able to have their picture taken, have their photo taken. And it shows just who they are, what their title is and which, um, which are our facilities or departments they're working in. So people can go through and then if you go all the way, she's so cute, by the way, this little one right here. She's adorable. Um, and so we can get to know each other that way. And then the people who did not want to have their picture taken or were unavailable, they're still listed here at the bottom. So we'll do that every month. Obviously, it won't always be as long. And then moving on, we'll have, um, each month, Dr. Shepherd, she'll send an email out to all staff just to check in. And so that'll be right at the top. We'll have, instead of having by departments, this might get you off the hook a little bit for, for, for letting bullet points. It'll just be in our district and we'll have district level news that we want to share. And then moving on, each one of our schools will be able to contribute something that they're excited about that's happening in their schools as well. And then finally, I mean, I just put the video at the end because who didn't love that video, right? So it'll be, we don't want it to be too long or have a ton of, you know, jargon in it, but just some really basic stuff. So that is the next thing that we're doing this year and that'll go out tomorrow. Um, okay. Website. We are also building a new website. Well, I am building a new website, which is, you know, it's something. I'm going to give you a very sneak peek at what it might look like, well, what it's gonna look like, but it's just the bones, so don't get judgy about it, but it's pretty great. It's, um, it's going to look like this. And what's great about this website is that this piece right here, this news piece, once there's content in here, this will be the first thing that people see when they visit our website. It'll be really image heavy because I love to take pictures, but things that we really want our community to know will be very easy for them to find right there. What else is really great about this website is that the school is listed here. Um, we'll each be able to, the Cardinals loved this so much. Like basically their website gets to be Cardinal red and they're super jazzed about that. And Tarmigan Ridge will get to have like their green and yellow kind of a thing, so. When you, here on the right-hand side, you'll have, um, links to connect with us and we'll expand this a little bit. There'll be a few more, but right below the fold here are these Find It Fast links. And so these aren't necessarily the ones that we'll have, but we'll, some of them are what we will have. We'll certainly have contact us, lunch menus, transportation and our calendar because this new website is going to have a great calendar that integrates with Google. In fact, this entire website will integrate with Google. With our current website, when somebody has a file or a form that needs to be uploaded to the website, they have to send it in a PDF to me or Jenny to upload onto the page. Well, now they can create a Google folder essentially that's tied to their department and they just drop the Google, the, the file into that Google folder and it will automatically integrate to the website. So it'll make it a lot easier for annual updates and so it, it's just, it's going to be a much quicker process and the same with the calendars. Those will also integrate with Google. Okay, yes, yes, we can also have jobs under, um, we'll have Find It Fast Human Resources. She literally, that's so cute that you texted me that. It's a surprise you'll save. Sorry, I got distracted. Okay, we're almost done. So that's our, a look at our new website. And I have two more things I wanted to fill you in on. The next one, I'm actually super pumped about. It's called Peachjar. And what Peachjar is, is it's an email service that, um, allows our parent groups, booster clubs and community organizations to reach out to our families through email in a way that is different from the communication that they are used to receiving from the Orting School District. My children are in the Puyallup School District and they use Peachjar there. And there are a lot of school districts in, um, the state of Washington and really nationwide they use it. So I'm going to show you what it looks like. It's going to say Puyallup. So as a parent, I will receive, um, an email that says it's from the Orting School District. And you'll come on here and it'll basically be all of these electronic flyers. Welcome to Fergrove Elementary School. Um, this one looks like, uh, one of the junior high schools is having a, uh, one of the parent groups is having a fundraiser. Um, and we, what's great about this too is it also connects our families with resources like the Haven, um, the Pierce County Library System and even, um, summer camps and things like that. Um, it also saves our organizations money because they don't have to print hundreds of flyers. So if they're a nonprofit group or parent group or booster club, this is a free service for them to use. If they are for profit, they pay a fee, a small fee to Peachjar. We have the ability to approve, we have, we have to manually approve every flyer that goes out and we have 100% right to say that we're not going to send something out. Just because it's uploaded doesn't mean it goes out, so it's important. So that's what Peachjar is and, um, I've already met with two of our parent group leaders to kind of go over this and talk about, is this something that you, that you would like and would this work for you? And they, they're really excited about it too, so.
Tara, so is this like, once a week, we get something like this or?
We'll probably push it out about once a month, but when you are on the website, this little peach will be here. So at any time, um, you can access it and see the digital flyers and all of the opportunities that are available, um, for our students. And you can also differentiate when you upload a flyer, you just wanted to go to. And you can also differentiate when you upload a flyer, you just wanted to go to elementary school or you just wanted to go to high school. So, it doesn't, not everything will go to the entire district, which is, which is pretty great, too.
So, think of the, all the flyers that go in backpacks home now, that don't always make it home.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And I've, I've enjoyed using the service as a parent of a Puyallup student. And the last thing is something that Chris has been helping me with, which I'm also very excited about. Previously, our schools have been using Skyward to communicate with families through email. We have been using a service at the district level called School Messenger. We're going to do some training with all of the school secretaries to start using School Messenger for two reasons. The first reason is that School Messenger allows you to email, text, and call, so parents who have opted in can receive a text message. But the second reason is that School Messenger will automatically translate those text messages and emails into the language that that family is most comfortable with, as long as they've indicated that on their forms. So, it will make all of our district-level communications much more accessible for all of our families. And so, we're just going to get that training done here, it's a priority, and then they'll start using that. And so, that's just a way, and then, and finally, I'll just end by, by saying that, you know, it's, it's important for us to differentiate communication. So, those emails, phone calls, and text messages that come from School Messenger, that come from the Ording School District, you know, those are used for like important things, and school closures and incidents, and, you know. Peach Jar, it will look different. So, and they're not going to get phone calls or text messages about it. They'll just get an email that they can look at if they want to or not. And then, the schools continue to communicate their school-level information through those fun newsletters that they started doing last year. So, you've got lots of different ways that are different and, and unique that we're communicating with families. That's all I have.
Good, one more thing. Talk about the access of the website for persons with disabilities.
Oh, oh, absolutely, okay, yes.
So, when you, when you have a visual impairment or something, or a, what would you call it? Hearing impaired, thank you. When you look at a website, it doesn't, it doesn't, you know, you can't necessarily see it. So, this new website is going to be what's called ADA compliant, which we're required by law to do. So, like, the contrast between text will be such that if I'm visually impaired, I can still read it, and there's color checkers that make sure that that's happening. If I have, for example, uploaded an image, that image needs to have a little alt, it's called an alt text caption, so that if I have an, what's called a Web Reader, I think is what it's called, it reads the website for you, it will explain to that person what that's a picture of. So, there's just, there's like 10 different things that you have to do to make, at least, to make a website ADA compliant. And so, that's one of the reasons that we're building a website from scratch instead of trying to like maybe untangle and update the old one is because we want to make sure that everything on there is 100% accessible. And it will, of course, also have a translator here so that we can, you know, families can translate. Thank you for reminding me. Do you have any questions about any of these wonderful things that we're doing this year?
I have a question, but I have a comment.
Yes.
On the flyer that you sent out.
Yes.
I looked at that right before I came to the board meeting tonight, and I was drawn in. Whoever chose the students in the little biographies, it was a fantastic job of being able to draw in what our teachers and staff are trying to do for the students to meet that ready-for-college careers in life. It was really good to have the story of the student and to be able to tie it directly to the college career for, you know, the first, the first guy and then, you know, career for, and her whole story. And then, I think it's a little bit harder for people to say, what does life-ready mean? And we just, when you just gloss over it, you just kind of think, well, that's kind of a no-brainer, isn't it? But, but really, to hear that story and to know, we need to teach kids how to get through difficult situations and teach them how to manage their days, that that is how to succeed in life. And I just want to applaud the entire thing for, for doing that, for drawing that back to the district. It was awesome.
Those kids were amazing. They were super fun to interview. And I will also say that their families were so supportive and really excited about being able to highlight and showcase the great accomplishments of their children. So, that was really fun to, to be a part of.
Tara's vision-focused and just keeps anchoring things back to your direction and vision around Christian life and showing how that lives in our district. So, thank you, Tara, for.
Thanks.
That was a great job.
Nice work.
So much work. It's great, no, I love it.
Thank you. Any other more, any other questions for?
One more, one more question. Emily, I know we had the group that you were, you pretty toward to help review the website.
Yes.
Are they going to get their hands, or be able to start doing that?
Good question. My goal is to have the website draft completed by the end of September, so we'll do focus groups in October, and I would like to have the website launched by the end of October. But, you know. But that's, I think that that's, that's an attainable goal.
Good.
And Tara was sharing, today we were talking, that Tara will be sending the, just the draft of the website to the board as well. Like, the focus groups, we'll see it, and we'll get feedback. She'll send the link to that, to the board, so you can see it and give any input, but just have a preview of what it's going to look like before it's deployed.
Yeah, yep.
Working very hard, Tara.
She produces a lot. She produces a lot.
I really like you.
We do.
You are so funny.
I know. Thank you. I'm hilarious, so I don't, yeah, no.
Thank you. Next thing, we do have executive session, right? Next thing, follow me.
Twenty minutes?
Twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes?
Twenty, okay.
Twenty minutes? We do have executive session for 20 minutes. We'll be coming out of executive session, and we'll make, not make any, any worries, we're just going to, as you're in the meeting, so if you're willing to come back, that's fine. But we're going to executive session, like, for 20 minutes on personnel management.
Take my, take my snacks and go.
Take a plate. Yeah, take a plate, grab some chocolate.
Please, ma'am.